For some reason this keeps turning itself off, don't want to listen to me. All right, we'll start over again. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the County Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, January 10th, 2013. It's nine o'clock. We'll get started. If I will as a reminder to myself and everybody, please turn your communication devices to a silent mode so we don't have to get involved with your phone calls. And this morning, we have Pastor Brian Knoll from Ferris Hill Baptist Church who's going to lead us in prayer and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask that Commissioner Lynchard please lead us in the pledge. If you all please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you've given us. We thank you for the goodness, Lord, that you display through your grace upon our lives, upon every single individual's life. Father, I thank you for these men and women, Lord, who are gathered here before me and as all of us are gathered before you. Lord, what a huge responsibility, Lord, that you've entrusted to them. Father, I pray would you give them great wisdom? Lord, would you just give them the wisdom of Solomon in order to execute, Lord, your goodwill upon the citizens, Lord, of this county? Lord, would you give them guidance? Lord, would we begin and continue, Lord, to think your thoughts? And so, Father, these things that are on the agenda today, Lord, would you give great clarity, Lord, and again, would your wisdom come? We thank you, Lord, for the many blessings, Father, from you. Lord, and our prayer, Lord, is that through the decisions that are made here today, Lord, would we be a blessing to others? And so, Father, it's by your grace, Lord, and it's by your mercy, and it's in your name, Lord, that we're gathered here and that we lift up this prayer to you. It's in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much. Lane, thank you for leading this morning.
Mr. Chairman, always while Pastor Knoll's here, just to express our appreciation again, through the years, is Ferris Hill has been one of our cold-weather shelters. It's the northern end of the county, the fair weather shelter, cold-weather shelter. We just appreciate that so much, what that must mean for the volunteers to come in and help those that need help, and how much we appreciate that and your support.
Ferris Hill's one of the rocks in our community. We've had a lot of rocks grow to our community over the years, but Ferris Hill's one of the founding ones, so we appreciate you.
We appreciate you all.
Thank you. All right, move on to the approval of the minutes of the December 13th, 2012 special meeting. If there's any comments or questions, changes to those minutes, hearing none, all passes. And today, I'll start to my right with Commissioner Williamson, approval of today's agenda or any changes, sir.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Salter?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynchard?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
County Administration?
Didn't have any additions, but we did move a couple of the items. I think we moved one that was a bid. We put it in the Financial and Bid Committee and maybe a couple of others, but there are no new ones, and it's the ones that you dealt with Monday.
Okay. And I have just one add-on, and it's basically discussion about the arena in East Milton, and simply because I can't come to y'all and talk one-on-one, it'd just be kind of a one-on-one talk type thing so we can get some things straightened out before we put it back on the agenda again. So, okay. Next item on here is at 9:30, we will have a public hearing, so if I missed the clock, if somebody will remind me, I'd appreciate that. And we'll start out now with Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items today. First is recommend resolution designating Project Breeze as qualified target industry QTI for Florida tax refund program and brownfield redevelopment bonus refund programs pursuant to applicable state statutes based on creating 200 jobs instead of the original projection of 100 jobs. We discussed this on Monday. If anyone has any questions, Shannon Ogletree is here to answer those questions, and I see a lady coming forward, so come on down and ask your question, please.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. What kind of business is this?
I will ask Shannon to respond to that because there are certain things that we can talk about and can't talk about prior to resolution of all the paperwork. So Shannon, share with us what you can without divulging too much confidential information.
Project Breeze is a manufacturing company that is located up in the northeast. They're looking at expanding here. Project Breeze is a manufacturing company located up in the northeast. They're looking at relocating down here. The company sells majority of their product outside of the state of Florida, which qualifies them for the various state incentives.
Ms. Cantu, here again, there are certain things based on confidentiality that the company requests us not to share until after all contracts are signed, and after that happens, we'll be happy to share any and everything.
Mr. Chairman.
And how were they able to increase the number of jobs 100%? Can you tell me that?
Here again, when we first talked about this, they were only looking at the number of jobs they would create within the first year. Since then, once they looked at their three-year relocation plan, over a three-year period, they would increase the 100 jobs to 200 jobs over a three-year period.
What's the impact of this business on the schools and the roads and so forth in Santa Rosa County?
Here again, it's hard to project the impact on the schools because we don't know the number of employees who would obviously have school-aged children. Obviously, there will be an impact as far as the roads go, 200 new jobs, hopefully over a three-year period certainly will have an impact on Highway 90, but more importantly, it'll have an impact on the four-laning of Highway 90 from the industrial park, 87 to the interstate, and that's their primary reason for wanting to be located in the East Milton Industrial Park, easy access to the interstate where they can distribute their product through the interstate system.
And that's part of the problem that I have is Highway 90 being two lanes of traffic, lot of traffic there in the afternoon, and we have big trucks coming through here with loads of lumber right down through the town of Milton. So I'm concerned that we need to think about increasing the roads and so forth in and out on that side of town.
And we totally agree with you, and that's one of the things that I think some of us have been working on for about 25 years, and I think the city of Milton is working closely with the Florida Department of Transportation along with Commissioner Cole, doing a PD&amp;E study on that portion of Highway 90 through Milton on trying to determine the best location and then more importantly, how you're going to pay for it. But there is an engineering study underway to look at the feasibility of doing that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Ms. Cantu, just, I'm just coming off being chairman of Economic Development and worked pretty close with Shannon on this particular project, and the best thing we can do now is pray that this occurs. It's a very exciting project, a very stable company, and like Commissioner Salter said, there's only so much that we can speak about because of confidentiality, but just have to take my word for it at this point. This is something we really would like to have in our county.
My concern is, you know, that the voters in Santa Rosa County understand that, yeah, it's great having 200 possible jobs coming into the county, but there are other costs that we don't necessarily always see associated with that, like having to increase the size of the roads and the schools and so forth.
And that's all factored in when we do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of this recommendation without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you. Number two, recommend proposal from Sign Crafters of Northwest Florida for signage and replacement of signage at Industrial Park. That includes both entrances and Peter Prince Airport as well, and I would move approval of all three of these projects without objection.
Hearing none, it passes. Well, we do have some comments about, from the other day, about the lighting, though, first.
I don't know that we got the information completed on the electrical service to those three signs.
Roger.
Yes, when I left the office, the electricians were in my office discussing it with Michael Schmidt. We will have that later on today.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think the idea is to go ahead and stub up and have them prepared for lighting regardless if we hook them up or not.
That would be my recommendation as well, and I'm pretty sure that the entrance to the original Industrial Park, I think that sign has electrical power to it. I'm just not sure about the other two. So, here again, my recommendation would be to move forward with all three of these signs, including electrical power provided at each site if it's not currently available. And I would move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to add on one thing, if you don't mind.
Oh, no. You had your comment.
Last night in the city of Milton, we had a horrible house fire, and it involved a young military couple stationed at Whitingfield, and they have three small children, and they lost everything. That includes furniture, clothes, baby needs. So we started working with them last night through our Veterans Memorial Foundation trying to help provide some money to start providing the bare necessities for this young family. So today, I'm just bringing that to everyone's attention. If you would like to help the Veterans Memorial Foundation help this young couple with their three children, you can do so by contacting 626-7292. And here again, it's a young couple stationed at Whitingfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Appreciate that, and I know one cry like that goes out in Santa Rosa County, the next thing we'll have is an overabundance, so I'll look forward to the overabundance. All right, we'll move on now from Economic Development Administrative Committee. And item number one is recommend variance of floodplain management ordinance for the Navar Beach Sea Turtle Conservation Center Incorporated located at 8740 Gulf Boulevard. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, it passes. Item two, discussion of proceeding with development, construction of the Baghdad Mill Site Project using public works, personnel, and equipment for worksite parking lot and retention work installation, other items that were listed. I see my Baghdad crew here today. They're taking up all row right down here in the front, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, as we had discussed Monday, really the issue, that we put together a plan that Ms. Harris had brought forward that has a commitment, I believe the TDC has additional $175,000, which I believe the total, if I'm reading the number right, is $337,000, which that's the, if you allow, authorize the public works to do their piece of it, it can fit the budget. If the public works doesn't do the work, then we don't have enough money to do the project. I mean, that's kind of it. So that was why I worded it on the agenda as we did.
All right, and have you and Avis discussed this?
My understanding with Avis is he's comfortable with it, we can work it in. That was my only concern, that was my primary concern.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? If not, it passes. Thanks, everybody from, Richard, I'm sorry.
This is appropriate time.
Yes, sir, come on, we'll.
My name is Richard.
We already passed it, so don't say nothing that'll get these guys mad, and we'll reverse it.
All right. My name is Richard Lewis. I live at 4629 Church Street in Baghdad. I want to express our appreciation for all that you've been able to accomplish in helping us achieve this long-lived project. This is eight years in the making, and we believe that we will open perhaps the most spectacular venue in Northwest Florida. If you've seen the site, and I know all of you have, you know it's at the confluence of Pond Creek and Blackwater River, simply a gorgeous site. But equally important, it honors an historic site that is important in the development of Florida. Many argue that business and industry got its major impetus on the access between Baghdad and Pensacola with the great fortunes that were made in the lumber industry and shipping, and that those capital allowed businesses and industry to burgeoning in the state of Florida. It is indeed one of the most historic sites in our state, and we'll be honoring that in a multitude of ways, including instruction for school students. So again, Doug Lassiter, who is in Texas at the moment, and he regrets not being able to be here, and I, President and Vice President, and all of the members of the Baghdad Waterfront Group, want to express our appreciation to all of you and especially to Mr. Cole for his unwavering support. Thank you very much.
Richard, thank you. And just to kind of give you all a heads up, Richard, was it your daughter that did a lot of the historical background?
I'm sorry.
Your daughter did a lot of the historical background work on the park for our kiosks.
Oh, yes.
And those are coming along good. And just to show everybody an example of what we've done, we're going to local manufacturers to build the stands for the kiosks, and the sign will be built with local RT, or I guess, metalworkers that'll work on the sign, so.
With Mr. Cole's help, we're saving a great deal of money by doing that locally rather than doing it commercially.
And I want to challenge the group to one other thing. I'm just sitting here having to think, you know, there's a channel called the History Channel. I think we need to approach them about doing a program on this, not, maybe it's a little premature, but as we get the park developed.
Yes.
And get them to come down, especially if we get a reenactment going at the same time.
Indeed.
So that may be something, I'm sure, you know, the History Channel isn't something you pick up the phone and call them, and the next day they're here. So that may be a project we can get into motion right now, and it won't coincide with where we're at, and they, you know. I'd like to see us approach them and get some good input from them.
Wow.
They may say, well, let's get pictures as we grow the park.
Right.
And then we'll do, you know, we might could get a whole program on that, and that would be enormous for the kickoff of that park and getting Baghdad on the map through a national venue, so.
It's an excellent idea, and the site certainly warrants that kind of attention.
Yes.
We'll pursue that, Mr. Cole. Thank you for that suggestion.
All right.
Thank you again, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Item number three, recommend permitting Greater Navar Beach Chamber of Commerce use of the Navar Beach Park for the 29th Annual Fund Fest, April 26 through 27, 2013, and the Navar Nature Walk Park for the Taste of Navar Sunday, April 28, 2013. Mr. Walker, were those dates corrected? No? Okay.
Yes, and it actually was the use of the Nature Walk Park for the Taste of Navar as on Monday I'd had it both in the.
No problem, just making sure since we had that, okay. And hearing no objections, it passes. Item four is recommend contract with Contact Intelligence dot com, Inc. for executive recruitment services for Director of Economic Development Office. Hearing no objections to that, it passes, but I will add, since Mr. Ogletree's sitting right there, that I think you're doing an outstanding job today. Thank you for your service. Okay. Item five is recommend joint resolution of disproportionately impact counties regarding allocation formula for funds received under Restore Act. Hearing no objections, it passes. Item six, recommend agreement with City of Milton regarding operation of Optimus Park. Seeing no objections, it passes. Item seven, recommend Florida Division Emergency Management federally funded public assistance agreement for Hurricane Isaac. Seeing no input or questions, it passes. Item eight, recommend installation of covered drainage system at the cost of $69,250 across private property adjacent to Woodbine in exchange for draining easement required for five-point intersection improvements. We all got the email from Ms. Jones about the change of language there for an easement. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, it passes. Number nine is meetings, and unless otherwise noted, the meetings below will be held in the boardroom of the Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. All the meetings are posted on the hard copy and also on the Internet, so I invite everybody to take a look at those meetings, and if there's any changes, they'll also be noted on the Internet. Okay, that moves us now to engineers report. Item number one is recommend amendment of number one to the Florida Department of Transportation Agreements, FPID 421644-2-52-03 and FPDID 421644-1-52-03 for advanced funding of sidewalks along US 98. I recommend that, and hearing no objections, it passes. This is going to be an outstanding lifesaving project, and Commissioner Lynchard, thanks for moving that forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, just to circle back to a discussion we had on Monday, we mentioned that these are funded through the impact fees, and those fees are perishable, and there was a question about how much we have allocated already for 2013, and Mr. Blaylock confirmed that we have allocated a sufficient amount for this year to carry us through to the end of the year. Just to note, over the next two years, we'll have to allocate an additional $1.6 million in Area III impact fee.
I'm sure on Highway 98, you won't have any problem.
You know, and I think that would be the one thing we did, is Ms. Bell did a good job of developing the impact fee report, she and Sean Ward. So the points well taken is in Districts One and District Three, District One being the north end, Three being the south end, we have some perishable funds in the north end. I believe there's an intersection project that we're looking at, but we need to come back, staff needs to come back with a plan or at least a range of alternatives for the next couple of years. You need to have a plan because Commissioner Lynchard's right is, the next several years, we're going to have to make those decisions, and they're going to be fairly time-consuming.
Commissioner Lynchard, is there any way to, since you're going to be doing these projects down there, that we can go ahead and make some plans and then piggyback off that project and keep it rolling type thing, or you've already looked into that?
There are, and the recreational study that was done in District Five several years ago encompassed a sidewalk plan, if you will, for most of, well, most of District Five, and extended on over into District Four just a bit on 399. So there are projects that have been identified. We don't have any cost estimates on them yet, but there are projects out there that we can work into the plan.
You know, could be a cost savings in that mobilization, demobilization stuff, that always burns me up.
We'll certainly look into that.
I haven't figured out a way yet to tell people whenever they bring their car to my shop that I got to mobilize my toolbox from one bay to the other and charge you a little extra for that, so. If you want to do the job, get your stuff there and get it done, so. All right, we'll move on now. We passed that one. Move on to item two is recommend final payment to Brown Construction of Northwest Florida Incorporated for the Harrison Avenue Drainage Project to include $37,704.60 for unsuitable material removal and backfill. We discussed this the other day. Mr. Roger, you got any other comments on it? Okay. If not, then it passes. Item three, recommend change order number two in the amount of $7,556.05 and change order number three in the amount of $1,432.90 to the Contract of Vision Construction for construction of Pace Community Center. Mr. Williamson, anything on that?
No, there's no problem with it. Actually, additions and deductions and a lot, part of it was to do with the material we paid for to save sales tax.
Okay. We sure gotten a lot of good comments about that community center since it was built. Nice project.
And I have to give Mr. Salter credit because he has been the in-house keeper of the, making sure everybody did their job like they should have since he's next door. He did a good job of overlooking it.
That's what you call through-the-fence project manager, since it is next door to my house, and I can tell you it's been well-used, because I see activity out there every afternoon, every evening, so.
Did I see a building permit pulled for your property for a hot dog stand in the back corner?
Through the fence.
All right, well, thank you, and we'll pass that project. Okay. Item number four, recommend work order number four with Hatchmont McDonald, Florida, Inc. LLC for the review update and proposed minimum airport standards for Peter Prince Field at a cost not to exceed $10,905. Hearing any objections? Not hearing none, it passes. Item now, we'll go on to Public Service Committee. Commissioner Lynchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend agreement with Florida Division of Emergency Management for Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $14,200 and authorize execution of relevant documents. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is recommend agreement with Florida Division of Emergency Management for Citizen Core Program Grant in the amount of $8,625 and authorize execution of relevant documents. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is recommend subordination of mortgage agreement in the amount of $7,500 for ship home purchase assistance loan for property at 5932 Ashton Woods Circle, consistent with board policy. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is recommend soliciting bids for abatement of the nuisance or unsafe properties as follows. 1865 Anderson Avenue in Gulf Breeze, 5857 Capital Drive Gulf Breeze, 9061 Eagle Nest Drive Navar, 8136 Melina Street in Navar, 2060 Presidio Street Navar, 4205 Sixth Avenue in Pace, and 2251 Tom Street in Navar. I'll move approval of this without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes. That concludes Public Services.
Next, Public Works Committee. Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll have one item today. It's recommend scheduling a public hearing on the proposed vacation of the alleyway between lots nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, and lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen of Block six sixty-seven in the Avalon Beach subdivision, and I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all we have, and you may want to go back to the public hearing.
Okay, we've got one more minute before the public hearing. You know, Commissioner Lynch, do you want to knock out a few of these?
I'll go as fast as I can. Item number one, recommend bid from Santa Rosa Press Gazette advertisement of the delinquent tax roll at a rate of twenty-seven cents per line as low bidder meeting specifications. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is recommend bid from Sessions Construction Services for demolition of the following nuisance unsafe structures as low bidder me- meeting specifications. Sixty-two twenty-eight Bryce Street, two thousand eight hundred dollars, forty-three thirty-six Melton Road, two thousand four hundred dollars, forty twenty-three Raven Street, two thousand one hundred dollars, fifty-four fifty-six Spruce Street, four thousand eight hundred dollars, and sixty sixteen East Bay Boulevard for two thousand four hundred dollars. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes, and we'll go now to our public hearing. Application and resolution to the Florida Department of Transportation for Section fifty-three-ten Public Transportation Grant for the replacement of three vehicles for the disadvantaged door-to-door transportation program. And, uh, got any buddy from the public that would like to speak on this? Any questions to clarify? Any board members? Mr. Lynch?
Just want to point out, Mr. Chairman, that the transportation disadvantaged service program does help a lot of, uh, people in our community, primarily those who are, uh, physically, mentally, uh, disabled, um, and also people who, uh, have no other means of transportation, and it's a, a, a service that runs short every month on the amount of trips that, uh, that it's able to, to meet out.
Okay. And, and another note of clarification, I got a call this morning from Mike Mashburn from the local radio station, and, and, uh, there was some confusion on the, uh, the transportation, the bus transportation system that board chose not to, to fund this time, and that's a totally different program. This is a program that's been in place quite a few years, uh, again, for the disadvantaged door-to-door transportation program. It is not a reinstatement or any, any action taken on the old bus route. Uh, that bus route will terminate. So just thought, go ahead and get that out since, uh, there was some confusion on that this morning. Any other comments or questions? If not, uh, move for approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes, and at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item three is recommend bid from Panhandle Grading and Paving, Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten dollars for safety upgrades at US ninety East Spencer Field Road intersection as low bidder meeting specifications. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four, recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero sixty-seven in the amount of eight-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-two-hundred dollars carrying forward fire MSBU funds for the Baghdad VFD Building. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five, recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero sixty-eight in the amount of twenty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars for the contract with Pegasus Engineering for Settlers Colony Drainage HMGP Drainage Project. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item six, recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero sixty-nine in the amount of ninety-one-thousand-three-hundred-six-six dollars for Phase Two of the Cisco Voiceover IP System funded from Capital Projects Fund. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item seven, recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy in the amount of ten-thousand-five-hundred dollars carrying forward funds for the building renovation design for Navar Beach Sea Turtle Conservation Center and the Tourist Development Fund. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item eight is recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy-one in the amount of forty-thousand dollars carrying forward funds for Hendrix B. Santa Rosa County Settlement Agreement in the Self Insurance Fund. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item nine, recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy-two in the amount of one-hundred-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars carrying forward recording department fees to complete the image index project as requested by Clerk of Courts. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item ten, recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy-three in the amount of two-hundred-five-thousand dollars to reverse budgeted debt proceeds for Woodbine Springs Dam Repair MSBU and funding project from the road and bridge at four percent interest for four-point-two-five years. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item eleven, recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy-four in the amount of twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-twenty-five dollars for Citizen Corps Homeland Security and CIRC grants and allocates for expenditure. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Rec, item twelve is recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy-five in the amount of seven-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars carrying forward funds the Navar Beach Bridge's rehabilitation-led abatement. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes. Uh, if I might, real quick, on that bridge, uh, Roger, uh, do we have a timeframe on that, and, uh, how much, how did, how long did that extend the timeframe on that bridge with this extra work?
I recall, I believe it was sixty days. The intent, the contractors continuing to work is to try to meet that original deadline because we expressed our concern about going much into March.
Yeah.
Because of the season, and so they're pushing for it, but, but contractually, there were additional days.
Hopefully, by tourist season, we'll have a nice new, pretty bridge, or not a new bridge, but it'll look pretty anyway.
Yes.
Be in good shape. Okay, good. Thank you.
Item thirteen is recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy-six in the amount of six-thousand-five-hundred-sixty dollars for Section fifty-three-ten Transportation Disadvantaged Program Grant Vehicle Replacement Local Match from Reserves. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item fourteen is recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy-seven in the amount of fourteen-thousand-twenty-five dollars for four sets of aluminum bleachers for Tiger Point Recreational Facility from District Five Recreation Funds. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item fifteen is recommend budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash zero seventy-eight in the amount of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars for installation of two fifteen-hundred-watt sports lights at the Navar Soccer Complex from District Four Recreation Funds. I'll move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item sixteen is recommend the county expenditures and check register, and I'm going to trust that Commissioner Melvin has reviewed that thoroughly and placed it on your desk, so I'll move approval of that without objection.
All right. Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes Budget and Financial Management.
Okay. Just a very brief add-on that I had was on the, uh, uh, just, there again, since I can't come down and, and sit down and talk to y'all, you know, one-on-one, this is the best we could do, but if there's any, uh, other concerns that you've thought of or questions, if you'd please, uh, get them to Cal-Holly, we're working diligently to get the questions answered that, you know, the board members had. Uh, some things that have, uh, that I have been able to find, uh, since the last meeting is that the, we are able to extend the current bids, uh, so we're still in a comfort zone there as far as the, the, uh, cost staying the same, and I've identified about fifty-thousand dollars in, in savings, uh, to that project, uh, and there alone is just, uh, that's basically just as the county cutting the checks and not having to pay sales tax, uh, on that to lower that price, uh, and I'm basing it all on the, uh, the low bid on the shortened version of the project. And, uh, also that if that, if that bid is awarded to that particular contractor, he has no less than twenty-four employees that live here in the county. So just some things that have come to light since our last discussion of that, and just wanted to make sure that everybody, if they had any other comments or questions, things that, you know, concerns that might come up, if they could get them to Cal so we could get some answers on those. And really, that's, that's all I had on that. Okay. Any other input from board members, any staff, anything by, by the general public? If not, I apologize. Monday, I, I missed announcing our new Clerk of Courts is sitting here with us now, so, Mr. Spencer, you got any comments, and, uh, starting to get writer's cramp yet from signing them checks?
Uh, no, not yet, but I appreciate, uh, the recognition, Chairman, and I look forward to working with everybody.
Okay.
I think we work good as a team.
All right, that's it. All right. Hearing no other comments, questions, or concerns, we're adjourned.